Today, January 20th, 2016. Public meeting of the Halton District School Board. I'd like to welcome everyone and for those in the audience and those on camera. Oh, just a second. Oh, I didn't start it. Did... Oh, you guys are wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So, everyone is here tonight except a couple of our superintendents. And so, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Trustee Reynolds, seconded by Trustee Pappen. Is there any discussion on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor. Still one more. Trustee Reynolds? I don't think he confirmed it. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We... Is there any... I'd like to remind everyone, if you haven't turned your phone or what other computer or anything else that may make noise, to mute or off, that would be appreciated. I'd also... So, is there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, there are no delegations or presentations. So, we'll move on to the minutes of the board meeting from January the 6th, 2016. Do I have a mover to approve the minutes? Trustee Gervent, seconded by Trustee Oliver. Any discussion on the minutes of January 6th? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just had a couple of little questions. The trustee honoraria, when it says responded to trustees' questions, missed the capturing my request that it... The enrollment would be, excuse me, labeled with the date so that people would know. And I noticed that it didn't make it into the report, revised report. So, that may be why, because it wasn't caught in the minutes to then follow up on. And wondered about motion 16007, who actually notifies the staff committees of the striking report having been passed? Because I don't know whose responsibility is to notify people that you are or you aren't on a committee come January, because most of the staff committees go September to June. I believe a number of superintendents did notify any of those that they were aware... That they're part of or aware of.
Then I'll pass along the one that I'm still getting emails for and forwarding on to find the person who's replacing me. Okay, thank you. One more. Also, in 4.2.5, the trustee question, including tracking students from kindergarten to grade one, the point was that we should do more than just track the kindergarten to one. We should track the total grade one proportion. So, that was the point, wasn't just that we track SK to grade one. We also need to know how many get into grade one from everywhere. Director Miller, you remember me mentioning that? Okay. So, that's just the piece on that one. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So, we are on to approval of business transacted in private session, and we do have a couple items. Go ahead.
First, as be it resolved, that the Halton District School Board appoint Terry Blackwell and John Pennyfather as superintendents of education with terms and conditions detailed in a contract parallel to existing superintendents with duties to commence on February 1st, 2016. And I so move.
Thank you. Seconded by Trustee Collard. Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations to new upcoming superintendents, Blackwell and Pennyfather, who are probably watching, we think. One more.
Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board ratify the memorandum of settlement which was reached with the Ontario Secondary School Teachers Federation, District 20, Halton, Office Clerical Technical Unit, OCTU, on January 6th, 2016, subject to ratification by the union. And I so move.
Thank you. Seconded by Trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other items? Okay. So, we are now up to our order paper. Is there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Hi. So, I read through it really carefully this week on a roll with the minutes. So, the first motion, I'm suggesting that perhaps, motion M120119, perhaps that the first four sections be shaded so that, because they're like chronologically already happened, but we still need to leave the whole thing intact, and therefore it would highlight the fact that the only piece of it is the part that's coming in to affect September 2016. Because it's also the first motion on the order paper, it would help just, you know, people just skip down to be it resolved that due to the grandfathering, that would be the part that would be left unshaded. The next one, the other two comments were related to Trustee Oliver at bench asked for clarification around two items in last week, the last meeting, about things that were delayed until 2017, meaning M130073 and M140142. And I'm wondering whether we could add that 2017 somewhere either underneath the responsibility or in the date somewhere or somewhere at the bottom so that people don't... I mean, we could be a year and a half and we could ask it every month, so that way it won't get asked for a while. And the other query I had, although I think I've got a response figured out, is the last week, we had a motion about asking about the ombudsman procedure and working around that. And it, that motion, 160004, is not on the order paper, but it is on the pending reports. And I just wanted to clarify whether it should be on the order paper or just on the pending reports. So, when I read it, I went, oh, there's a missing motion. And then when I got to the pending reports, I was thinking, okay, but should it be on the order paper? Because it's, so it's just one or the other. We don't... Because it's a, the work to be done is on the order paper. The fact that there's supposed to be a report puts it on the pending reports. And so, okay, that was just my query on that one.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will now move on to our action items. And the first action item is item 3.4.1, trustee honoraria, Superintendent Vierman, report 16000 on page 10 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Vierman. When you're ready.
Thank you. Through the chair, at the last meeting, we provided additional information with respect to the manner in which the honoraria, the tenant or the enrollment portion of the honoraria was calculated. And at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to read the motion first. "Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approve the revised trustee honoraria to reflect the adjustment to the enrollment amount per trustee honoraria policy." Moved by trustee Pappen, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Superintendent Vierman. Our next item is the director's performance review policy. Director Miller, report 16012 on page 12 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair. I missed the reports before you. It's been out on the website, and we've had no responses. I was a bit disappointed, actually.
Trustee Collard.
I just wanted to move the motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought you wanted to speak. I'm going to read the motion. "Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approve the revised director's performance review policy as appended to report 16012." Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now up to our student trustee reports. Trustees Schneider and Sahai.
Good evening, everyone. We'll keep this quick. Since the last meeting, students are in exams right now, so we haven't, or summatives, so we haven't done much with our Senate or anything. Jovan and I, though, are working to plan up our next upcoming goals for this year, which obviously include our Student Voice Day and our conference and various meetings. And yeah, so we'll keep you updated for the upcoming year. But for now, we're just trying to get through exams, so.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions for our students trustees tonight? Seeing none. Well, good luck on your exams and your summatives. No stress.
I'm not stressed.
You're here. You can't be stressed, you're here. Thank you. So, our next items are notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Trustee Daniele.
Yes. Just, I will hopefully be bringing to the next meeting a motion around recognition of Holocaust Month. So, it's something I've been working on, Tracy Austin was helping me with it, so hopefully I will have it... Sorry, a motion regarding recognition of Holocaust Month.
Thank you. Okay. Any other notices of motion? Seeing none, we're up to our action items for February the 3rd. The first item is OPSA AGM expenses. Trustees Collard and Daniele, report 16015 on page 16 of your board package. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that it does not state in the motion that the VP from Central West is Halton District School Board trustee. And since that might not always be the case, I will amend the report for the next time as well as stating that the AGM is in Ottawa. I have one question, though, and it came about after reading the next motion, which includes the transportation. And I wasn't sure whether or not I needed to include transportation since our transportation policy already covers the OPSA activities. And so, I didn't think that I needed to include that in the motion, but I want to make sure that I have the motion correct. So, I would like to, through you, to Superintendent Vierman, get clarification on that.
Superintendent Vierman?
Through the chair, if the intent of the motion is to include transportation, I believe it would be prudent or would maybe eliminate any further questions in terms of transportation. So, that's the intent. I believe it should be included in the motion.
Okay, thank you. And just one other note was that on the report, trustee Daniele's name and position are not correct, and I would ask for that to be corrected in the next package.
Thank you. Okay. Any other... Anyone else would like to speak to this? Okay. So, we're now up to the next item, which is item 4.2.2, the OSTA ACO trustee mentor expenses. Trustee Daniele, report 16016 on page 17 of the board package. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. And this is something that I take on through my role as student trustee mentor. It was started several years ago when then-director Wayne Joudry insisted that somebody accompany the student trustees in terms of liability. I did check with current Director of Education Stuart Miller to confirm that he still felt that's that way, and he did feel that somebody should be accompanying them. And so, that's why this is before you, because it is something that I do as part of my role as student trustee mentor rather than my work specifically as a trustee.
Thank you. And both... And both those motions will come back next week, or in two weeks. We're now up to our information items. The first information item is the additional professional activity day. Associate Director Bogue, report 16011 on page 18 of your board package. Welcome, Associate Director Bogue. When you're ready.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The report is before you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We received a memo from the ministry asking us to add an additional PA day this year and forthcoming years. We didn't have a lot of time to consult. We got some heads around the table and looked at the existing school calendar and tried to avoid dates that would be problematic, as outlined in the report, and landed on April the 8th. I'm happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Associate Director Bogue? Vice Chair Graves.
It's one of the questions I'm anticipating from the community is, was June 30th a consideration? I understand, and perhaps you could just confirm for me, that the request from the ministry has some date timelines attached to it.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Graves, June 30th was a consideration initially. We started to talk about what would be practical, and the ministry's language was that they urged school boards to set the date prior to April the 15th. So, there might have been some flexibility there, but in consultation with our co-terminist board as well, they were pretty, they were reading that as meaning, let's schedule it before April the 15th. So, we worked with them to coordinate the date.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through you, Chair, to Associate Director Bogue, is this additional PD day for provincial priorities or for board-defined priorities?
That's a great question, trustee Gray. This, the date is, has some parameters that were outlined by the ministry based on the collective, the provincial collective agreements that were, or the provincial agreements that were reached. For our board, and each board looks a little bit different. For our board, the elementary, the etfo day has to be half health and safety and half ministry initiatives. That's one of the criteria. For secondary, it's ministry initiative-related, so that gives us some flexibility to do something that's connected to the ministry initiatives, applied learning, mathematics, those kinds of things. And for groups that are not in those two groups, there's some specific, role-specific PT that can be done, and we have some flexibility there as well.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for Associate Director Bogue? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. For some reason, I can say Associate Director Bogue. Why couldn't I ever say that for you?
My name's Miller.
You're a comedian. Okay. Our next item is revised estimates. Superintendent Vierman, report 16009 on page 19 of your board package. Welcome back. Oh, there was an email that went out to all trustees with some supplemental information and revised report. Welcome back, Superintendent Vierman, when you're ready.
Thank you. Through the chair, this evening, we'll be reviewing the revised estimates. This is the second report in our schedule of reports for the fiscal year end. It's based on updated October 31 enrollment information and if there's any revised March 31 projected enrollment, and also any other items that may have transpired, whether revenue or expenditures, since the budget was approved. I've provided some information, some background information in terms of how we have actually prepared the report. There was direction from the ministry as a result of the ongoing negotiations and how they directed us to submit the revised estimates. So, that information's included in the package. However, in order to ensure that we provide the most up-to-date and complete information to the trustees, we've included all of the information included as part of the central bargaining in the information on page 20. Of note, in terms of our enrollment projections, from the initial elementary and secondary projections, we were pretty close, just off by 2.48 students, although there was a decrease in elementary and a slight increase in secondary. So, again, very close to the actual projections that we came up with back in April of 2015. In terms of staffing, summarized what the changes have been, again, very minor changes since the enrollment was so close to projections. We have included the 35 educational assistants that were approved at the last board meeting. So, the financial impact and the staffing FTE have been included in the summary information presented this evening. The appendices that Ms. Gortmaker has noted provide the details as to how we actually submit the information to the ministry. However, what I've done on page 20 is really condensed it and simplified it, if that's the correct wording, in terms of the change in revenues and expenditures. So, at the bottom of page 20, we've noted the changes in grants. So, again, we have reflected central, the impact of central negotiations in terms of the grid movement on the 97th day and the projected lump sum reimbursement. We also have an additional amount that relates to the Q and E. So, the Q and E qualification and experience. So, when we prepare the budget, we estimate where teachers will be, both elementary and secondary, on the grid. And that is then part of the grant calculation. Because there are absences, whether it's maternal or other illnesses, sometimes teachers that we anticipate to be on the grid aren't the teachers that we have to report as of October 31st. So, what we have to do is project when those teachers will be coming back. If they come back by the end of June, then we are reimbursed by the ministry based on their placement on the grid. If there's a variation in terms of the LTO, the long-term occasional, that is replacing that teacher, and the differential in salary impacts the information we report on October 31st, then we see either an increase or a decrease in the projected revenue. For this year, we are fortunate that we are projecting an additional $3.5 million as a result of the variation in the grid projected when we do the budget versus what we submit as of October 31st. So, on a yearly basis, that number may fluctuate a little bit. And again, in this case, we're fortunate that it'll provide additional projected $3.5 million in revenue. We've also summarized the impact of the ratified agreements in terms of projected expenditures. And we also have some other minor changes in terms of salaries and benefits. So, for year-end, at this point in time, we're thinking that the surplus will be in the neighborhood of $4.4 million. Again, things may change as we continue on during the year, but at this point in time, that's our projected surplus. As is noted in the report, as part of year-end, whatever that final number will be, we will be bringing forward recommendation for consideration as to how to allocate that surplus. Again, the appendices provide all of the details that are part of the submission to the ministry and part of the reporting that we do as part of year-end. And at this point, we'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Are there any comments or questions for Superintendent Vierman? I guess you've done such a good job, everybody understands it. That's great. Oh, no, there's one question. Vice Chair Graves.
As someone who used to do enrollment projections for post-secondary school, to be off by three students on upwards of 61,000, almost 62,000 students is quite extraordinary. Very impressed. So, and that's great. It means that we're doing a great job. Everyone's doing superb. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. Okay. So, just a minute. I know you're up again, I just had to clear everything, sorry. The next item is the budget schedule. Superintendent Vierman, report 16010 on page 22 of your board package. Superintendent Vierman?
Through the chair. We're not even done this year, and we're already planning for next year. So, typically, in January, February timeframe, we provide some initial information with respect to the development of the budget. So, 2016, 17 will be here very shortly in terms of budget preparation. I've provided, again, a little bit of information in terms of where we're at, whether it's from the provincial perspective, whether it's from the board perspective. And I've also provided some information with respect to the actual schedule, which is included starting on page 25. At this point, I know there will be some workshops scheduled for budget discussion, and as information becomes available, we'll be in a position to share the details with the trustees. Typically, the grants are provided to boards around the March, end of March timeframe. I anticipate that will be the case again this year. And it's really when we receive the grants that we, again, have a full-some picture of what our revenue will be. In the background, we are working on enrollment projections, on expenditure projections, and we also will have the same consultation process that we've had in the past with respect to the surveys, asking people to respond to various questions that we work with Communications Department in terms of preparing. And again, the details of what we'll be covering at each of the various time periods is included in the attached report, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Superintendent Vierman on this item tonight? So, trustees are aware, we had tentatively had scheduled introductory budget session on February the 10th, and speaking to Superintendent Vierman, we felt that maybe unless, unless there's a will with trustees, it would basically just be a recap of information that we had heard last year and that we may, we could miss that one and jump right to the next one. And so, unless somebody feels strongly they would like to have that session, we would probably not have that one, and we'll start, I can't remember the next session, it's in March, though. Don't see any. Trustee Gray.
Through the chair, Amos, to Superintendent Vierman. I note that on page twenty three of the board package, there's a reference at the very bottom about the education funding consultation, that in September twenty five, two thousand and fifteen, invitation was sent to school boards to participate. And on the next page, it refers to that a consultation guide was given and that a summary of the feedback received during the consultation session will be distributed to the school boards. Has that been received, or are we expecting that at this time?
Through, through the chair, a copy of the consultation guide, I believe, was distributed to trustees. But if not, I can provide a copy to Gail so that she can distribute it to the trustees. The ministry has, again, traveled throughout the province to, to gather the, the feedback. And they are in the process of preparing a summary of all the feedback received, which will be distributed to boards. At this point, we haven't received the feedback. By anticipate, it should be available fairly shortly. So again, if the, if a copy of the consultation guide has not been distributed, I can, I can have it shared, distributed to the trustees.
Thank you. And just so trustees are aware, in the People for Education information that came out, and I don't know, do all trustees get it? Or would you like me to reforward it to you? There was a link to the two thousand sixteen seventeen Education Funding Consultation Guide, which is just coming out. So that may be something that we should be looking at as well. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is also with respect to a notation on page thirty eight. It says in the italicized, announcing the launch of Experience Ontario. And I just wondered where, whether anybody had information on, on that. I, I went to.
Thirty eight?
Twenty three. Did I say thirty eight? Oh, my goodness. I, I meant twenty three. Wow, sorry. So. Anyway, in the second set of bullets there, the second bullet, it says announcing the launch of Experience Ontario. And what I found online was a press release by the province announcing this program, but, but no information about the actual program and what that'll look like. It looks fantastic, and I just wanted to know if anybody had any further information and if so, if we could get that information out. Thanks.
Superintendent Vierman? Associate Director Boeb.
Yes, thanks, Chairman. Yes, through you, two trustees. Experience Ontario started, that project started this year. We had one halt in school identified, and we had, I think, three student places out of the many within the province. And the province, the program is really looking at schools that have disadvantaged students, but kids that will graduate and then have the capability and the desire to go on to post-secondary, but, but don't go. So they're looking at all, all kinds of data across the province. What we're hearing is that we may not have a lot of opportunity coming forward in this next round either, just because of the area that we live in. But they're, we're hoping that we will have some dedicated spots again, how the province chose the one school that they did choose. And it didn't exactly fit with where we thought maybe the needs were, but they're looking at a whole set of data around employment, those kinds of things as well. So we're hoping we might have a few more spots this year, but we haven't heard yet.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on this report tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much, Superintendent Vierman. Our next item is the capital update. And Superintendent Cullen is not well tonight, so Director Miller is going to pinch hit.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I don't know if I can pinch hit in the way Jerry, I certainly can't talk the way Jerry does. But what I will do, if you have questions, I'll record them and get them to Jerry. Superintendent Cullen, I should say.
Are there any comments or questions on the capital update report? Trustee Greg Vance.
This is referring to the Alton Village construction. And I see construction is supposed to start in March. And I was just wondering, and I know you can't answer this, but if you could ask Superintendent Cullen, what measures are in place to make sure that the construction doesn't interrupt the classes going on at the school? Because it's a fully functional school.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Greg Vance. I can't answer the specifics around Alton Village. I can answer what we've done in the past around these schools, around schools in which there's construction in. Areas are cordoned off and fenced off and plot, if it's, if the construction is involving some taking down of internal walls, which it will ultimately, they'll put up barriers so the kids can't get there. But they, they set up the, they set up the construction so that they work, like the, the heavy trucks and the, the big equipment, the heavy equipment won't be coming in during the school day. It comes before the school day, there's flag, flag people to get them in. And they are out before the kids are in, and then they come in again at the end of the day when the kids are all out. And so it, the pretty safe environments. The board has, I, I've lost count of the number of construction projects we've done in which there were kids in the schools. So the one I was most familiar with was Maple Grove Public School in Oakville. And they had areas, complete no-go areas for kids and supervisors and so, so on there. But I will ask the specifics around Alton Village and ask Superintendent Cullen to respond.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Going on the theme of Alton Village, I'm curious, if they're bringing in equipment before the start of school and taking it out again, and then doing the same before, after school, what about the before and after school programs? What about extracurriculars that may be taking place before and after school? Just because it's not school hours doesn't mean there are no students there. And I'm wondering how we manage that. I know we do, I'm just wondering how.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Collard. We do, I'm not sure how we do it either. I've seen it, but I, I can get that question to him. I know there's, there, the contractors we use in those jobs put extra people on around flag people and all that's, all that, the extra support around that. But for sure, yeah, I don't know what the impact is, but.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on this report tonight? Seeing none. Our next item is the adminis, the operational plan update. Students, direct, Associate Director Boeb, report 16013 on page thirty of your board package. And I believe there was a PowerPoint sent out yesterday to all trustees. Welcome, Associate Director Boeb, when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Trustees, it's my pleasure to provide some highlights on the operational plan, the student section. And thank you to Superintendent Padre Barrack for the lights. As trustees are well aware, last spring and this fall, we're a little bit unusual in terms of the business as usual with some job action and sanctions and things of that nature. So one of the things I thought I should just address straight up front is we don't have the same kind of data that we would typically have when trying to report back and looking at, looking at it from a data perspective. EQAO didn't run, as you know, in the spring. Collecting of some diagnostic data, like PM benchmark scores and things of that nature, may not have happened in all areas. So we don't have a complete data set. So what I'll be reporting on today are things that we do have some data on, and we're just going to touch on some highlighted areas. And they're outlined in the, in the PowerPoint that came out. One of the things that we're very aware of is because of the lack of data, it made it very difficult to monitor some initiatives. And we know if we're not looking at data, not being able to monitor in the same way, we, we have some concerns that we don't lose traction in those areas. So those are on our radar moving forward. We're hoping that we're still moving forward, but on some of those specific pieces where we don't have data, we're just keeping a close eye on that to make sure that we haven't lost traction in some areas. So the student goals, just the summary there, you've seen those before. I'm going to highlight just a few strategies from each goal area. These are things that we thought trustees would want to, to be updated on. So goal one around engagement. These highlighted strategies are all secondary related. E-learning has been something that we've been very proud of, something that's grown significantly. And we had set a target of, or had a strategy of forty five different courses and seventy sections this year. And we've surpassed that with forty seven distinct courses and eighty two sections. It's, it's a really growing area and something that, you know, as the students choose it, we, we expand to, to meet the need there. In terms of, and that's online courses, but online learning happens throughout our schools in, as part of our face-to-face courses as well. So that blended concept and just a little bit around D two L, which is the platform that we use to house a lot of our online content. Lots of training going on with D two L. And it's been specifically a, a huge piece of our self-paced learning program as well. Gary Allen and Cell Apps, two, two schools where lots of individualized learning. And the teachers have been using D two L and the Google Classroom much more in those two areas, or those two schools. In the applied strategy in our secondary schools, all of our schools this year are onboard in the applied strategy. Last year, it was sort of, we took an invitational approach. We've seen the data back in the fall around our applied, our applied data. And certainly, that's, that's a big focus in our high school. So all schools are onboard. And what that means is that all schools have it embedded in their school improvement plans. They're doing collaborative teacher inquiry in their high schools around a number of areas, mathematics, different areas around student wellness and engagement. And our literacy coaches are working in our applied English classes as well. So we're making some traction there. In Halton, our staff have designed an additional qualification course that was approved by the ministry, and it's an AQ in applied learning. So we're, we're out there leading the province around applied learning. And we've now done a part one, a part two, and we're working on a part three so that some of our teachers will have the opportunity to get a specialist in applied learning. So that's great for Halton. That was the secondary piece. I move, I'm moving on to goal number two, which is around students realizing their potential. And I just want to highlight that I'm presenting the material from a number of our superintendents' areas. They're the experts, they're the folks that are deep into this work. That's my little way of saying that if there's a tough question, I'm probably going to defer and look around the room for somebody to help me out on that. But for example, in goal number two around our math plan, this is our elementary math plan. And so this is the great work of Superintendent Dyson and Principal Blackwell in the Elementary Program Department. In terms of our elementary math plan, we've implemented this year leaps and bounds as a diagnostic and remediation program in our grade seven and eight math cour, courses. So there's been training for school teams and our special ed resource teachers to implement this. We're continuing with leaps and bounds in grades three, four, and five, six. And you've heard about Dreambox, I think. We've seen that at budget time, and Dreambox is, is an adaptive learning technology used in the earlier grades. And we continue to, to move that out and train teachers. That training comes from a whole team approach from our Elementary Program Department, from our in-school math coaches. And there's a little smidgen of a math coach in twenty five of our schools. And then there's five math coaches that are spending more concentrated time in twenty schools. And our IPLs also have math as part of their portfolio. So there's lots of expertise out there in our schools, and the focus has been around pedagogy. So with the, the, the staff learning opportunities, things like our primary math institutes, or rolling out a new, any of our system resources, number talks, context for learning, Dreambox, those kinds of things. Primary math, additional qualifications courses, which are offered for our staff here in Halton. And Dreambox, again, I think we've, I mentioned that, we've got twenty three thousand licenses. But whenever those conversations are happening, whenever those training opportunities are happening for our staff, it's around instruction in the classroom. So how do we improve our, our instructional approaches?
Associate Director Boeb, are you supposed to advance the slide or is it the same slide?
I am supposed to advance. Thank you. Keep me on my game, Chair Amos. The Welcome Center was a big piece for us this year. Officially, we're, we're open for business, and it's been a huge, huge success. As you know, our Welcome Center connects families with those settlement support services. But a big piece as well, which is helpful for our schools, is that initial assessment. We've got kids coming from all over the world and trying to understand what their profile looks like so that we can set up appropriate programming for them. This year, we've seen sixty nine kids come through and have assessments done in the, in the elementary panel in the Welcome Center and two hundred and seventy two in the secondary panel. So that's pretty huge. And that's, you know, that's, that's what's coming to us each day from the beginning of September. And a big piece there as well is, is all of them except two have signed up for follow-up settlement support. So we've got them connected with the resources in the community. So that's a really positive, folks, for who, who are new to the country. On goal three, this is around safe and inclusive school environments. One big piece for sure is our mental health strategy. So I thought I'd share a little bit of data around our mental health strategy. The strategy consists of four different pillars, mental health literacy, reducing stigma, pathways to care, and curriculum connections. Where do we embed the mental health, learning for kids in the curriculum? I'll just focus on a few of the training and workshops, and some trustees may have been, been connected to some of these. Suicide, obviously, is a big piece for us and a real proactive preventative piece. Applied suicide intervention skills training has been provided to school staff as part of our prevention and intervention protocol. So all social workers and all child and youth counselors have received this training. And all of our secondary schools have, have received the training with at least one or two other staff members. And our elementary schools will receive the training for at least one elementary staff member. And that, we're not there in elementary just yet, but the high schools, we've got a really good slate of folks that have been through that training. Connected to that is a, a resource that's going out to schools. And the, the training was supposed to occur in the fall, but it couldn't happen unfortunately because of the, the pause. And it's called Intervention Plan for a Potentially Suicidal Student. So again, it's that proactive preventative kind of approach, helping our staff understand what the signs and symptoms might be, how to understand and recognize a student that's in distress. And then what do you do? So that's, that's really good work from that group. Reaching and Teaching the Anxious Learner Workshops began this month and are ongoing. And this is about mental health literacy and anxiety, which is, was identified as one of the key mental health issues that should be on our radar. One of the key barriers to learning was identified as anxiety. We've also got an annual conference called Disable the Label Conference. This is a student conference, and it's about promotion, mental health promotion, and reducing stigma. Again, very, very highly successful conference, twelve of our high schools attended. And so we've got our high schools involved, and we've also got our elementary, our little, our teachers of our little ones. We've got eight schools trained and kids have stress. And that's, again, a preventative kindergarten program around reducing stress and anxiety with the little ones when they come into our kindergarten classes. So lots of, lots of work happening there with mental health. And that's kudos to Superintendent Zonaveld and Teresa Wilson, our mental health lead, who lead that work. Phys ed and health curriculum, I know we've talked a fair bit about that. And it's, it's all around the new curriculum, which was a little bit controversial. That might be an understatement. All of our elementary school principals and teacher teams in each school have been trained. Excuse me, we've had an HDSB webcast and fifteen different school-based sessions. So I know this was, Principal Terry Blackwell was out kind of on the road show doing presentations to communities with very, very positive feedback from the families. Once they got into a room and actually talked about the curriculum and what was different and, and what did it really mean? I think that, that level of clarity was, was very helpful for our communities. Terry also did a number of sessions, I think, I've got picked down here, the Equity and Inclusive Ed Committee, and some of the super councils as well invited her to, to present as well. So a successful community and parent engagement strategy to help people understand that new curriculum. Goal four, this one is around sort of that early intervention and tiered support. And I, we've selected a couple of strategies here, one more mainstream, what happens with all of our younger students, and one for kids that are. and one for kids that are either special ed identified or maybe heading down that special ed pathway. So we continue to do the early literacy work that we've been doing, literacy monitoring in every school, the leveled literacy intervention, the LLI kits that you've heard lots about. They continue to be used in all grade one and two classes and sometimes our kindergarten classes as well. And some schools have really got onboard and are now using those kits as a literacy tool in other grades as well. Our kindergarten teachers have received some specific training around literacy in an FDK classroom. How do you embed literacy strategies in that play-based environment? And that's been a success this year. And we're starting to see some traction now with our teachers really understanding the need around that literacy, excuse me, teaching literacy to younger learners and specifically around those struggling readers. Where kids are not sort of at the stage to be involved in some of the intervention programs like leveled literacy intervention, our special ed folks kick in. And we have some teachers in our special education department called learning resource teachers, and their focus is around special ed students. They've been providing service to about 136 kids this year in fifteen different schools. About 20% of them are English language learners. And two-thirds of these kids get withdrawn and are provided with intervention on a one-to-one basis. So it's very, very intensive. And these are students that are really, in terms of the PM benchmarks, are at not yet reading when they entered in September. So the large majority of them, about 72%, were at NYR. And at this point, or at December, snapshot in December, that was reduced down to about 21%. And I think what our program folks would say is we need to get the kids to a PM benchmark of around two or so so that they can then become involved in that level literacy intervention. So these are kids that are pre-LLI. The Spec Ed guys, staff go in there, do a lot of really intensive work to get them up so that they are able then to participate in level literacy intervention. And we know that that early intervention is really, really helpful to get kids on track. The sooner the better. And goal number five. This is around differentiating, differentiated instruction and research-based strategies. One of those strategies we targeted this year was for parents to understand how do your kids learn mathematics in the primary grades? And so that's the first strategy. You may have seen the flyers, kids don't know their facts. So lots of regional sessions for parents, about 500 participants have been out. And again, this is Principal Terry Blackwell's work. She's been out again on the road show, helping our parents understand how their kids learn and how to help their kids learn mathematics. Presentations at the PICT conference and other school-based events in a large number of schools. One little stat here, 98% of the parents that have attended those events and provided feedbacks indicated that the sessions had really helped them understand how their kids are learning math and how to help them. So that's a pretty positive stat in terms of getting our parents onboard and getting them partnered with us in terms of helping their students. Assistive technology is something that is very, a large piece in our special ed department. Some changes around assistive technology over the last probably four or five years in terms of the actual pieces of technology that go out into the hands of our kids. It used to be about, five years ago, excuse me, we'd get a prescription for some technology, and our only tool was a laptop, and kids got laptops. Laptops came sometimes with stigma because they were kind of big and clunky, and it was just certain kids that had laptops. Now kids are bringing all kinds of technology to school. And our special ed folks are differentiating the technology based on student need, based on the family wish in terms of what kind of technology they'd like their kids to be using. So the breakdown now is about 22% laptops, about 40% iPads, and about 38% Chromebooks. So in the last, from December to December, we put out about 1,000 pieces, and that's kind of the breakdown. And that's kind of cool. I mean, seeing a student with a laptop, sorry, with an iPad or a Chromebook, that's pretty commonplace in our schools. And so from that perspective, the students with special ed needs don't have that stigma piece attached to them. There's also a significant cost reduction in terms of Chromebooks and iPads versus some of the laptops. So that's been a plus as well. And lastly, on here is our school programs and safe and inclusive school student services piece around, pardon me, around culturally responsive teaching and that sort of community piece. And our equity folks have done great work here. Principal Mary Jane Faris and Superintendent Etoff, in terms of providing learning experiences for our staff, they've been into 26 schools this fall where they have been doing some very explicit embedding of culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy. So helping our teachers to teach responsively in a way that the kids see themselves in the curriculum. So all of those equity lenses has been a big piece. And how to integrate restorative practices into the curriculum as well in terms of that safe and inclusive environment. Thirty, sorry, thirteen schools took on different collaborative inquiries into this work. So they're studying this a little bit further. And for second semester, we've got 28 schools that are coming onboard to do some additional work as well. So, pardon me, I'm losing my voice a little bit. That's sort of the highlights, and I apologize for kind of going on and on. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'll sort of redirect them to the folks who are involved in the work if trustees have some questions.
Thank you very much, Associate Director Bog. And you weren't going on and on. This is all really important stuff. And I think that we have made some great strides in all the different aspects of supporting our students. And I mean, this information is vital to, for us to hear because we need to know what's happening. And in coming up with our new multi-year plan, we, it's sort of a measure of what's happening in the system. So I'd like to thank you and thank everyone who was involved in the information because I know it's a cumulative piece of work from many departments. So thank you very much for presenting it. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you, and I would echo that. I think that was a great deal of information. But I guess for me, that there was too much information to hear orally. And there were just highlights on the slides, and there wasn't a report to go with it. So perhaps going forward, we could get more of that in the written reports that we receive in our board package so that we could look over it. And then we might be better prepared to ask questions at this point. But I know for me, there was just, I don't think I caught everything because there was so much information to absorb and so many wonderful things happening in our schools that having it in a written report, I would find much more helpful in the future. If you don't mind, please.
Thank you. We all have different learning styles. I like to hear it. I get that totally. Because I said, we all have different learning styles, right? Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you very much. Through your chair to, what do you want to call it? Associate Director Bog, thank you. My question is regarding goal one and the increase in the number of teachers using blended learning and desire to learn and so on. Just wondering what type of training and supports are available to teachers around blended learning and some of the learning management tools?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Vice Chair Graves. We have, actually, we have a wonderful staff who support e-learning. And it's not a big staff, but we have an instructional program leader, and we have our e-learning contact. And they're out in schools constantly providing training. So they have done some larger group sessions. What they found now, though, is that the best model for them in terms of training is to go into the schools and do that sort of job-embedded training. So they've got big skill sets in both Google Classroom and D2L, which is that online platform. Those are the two primary sort of environments that we provide training in. But I think we've got expertise growing in schools as well. And once you get it planted in a school, the school tends to take off because the teachers talk and collaborate with each other. But that training really happens out in the schools. And then we bring our online teachers together periodically to either do some larger group training. But most of it is that job-embedded.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments for our speaker tonight? Seeing none? Thank you very much for your report, and we'll look forward to the next update. So our next item is the administrative procedure update. Director Miller, report 16006 on page 31 of your board package. Director Miller.
Through your chair, Amos, trustees, all trustees, just two admin procedures this week are at this meeting. And very minor changes, selection of library and instructional resources and school councils. And essentially, what we did in library and instructional resources was separate the two out into two different parts. And a date change, and same in school councils.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Again, this is just for leaving best breadcrumbs. And you answered part of my question orally just now, saying what you did with the library and instructional resources. But part of the problem with the administrative procedure in that one is it says it was effective April 2008. And when it says reformatting, date change is another wording. And nowhere in this new administrative procedure does it say, by the way, we looked at it, and we didn't have to do anything, but we're going to look at it again in 2020. So when you get to 2018, it looks like nobody's looked at it since 2008. And oh, well, I guess we'll look at it every 12 years. So I just think maybe we seriously need to consider having some kind of revision history saying we looked at it and no changes made. And assuming that the revision date is correct and it doesn't need reviewing as often, which makes some sense. And it reminded me of the other comment that I forgot to make when we were doing the director's performance review policy. The, that policy that was attached at that time had all the sample dates at the top right corner. So just pointing out that maybe that should be taken off before it comes to our board package when it's about to be posted the next morning. Perhaps the one that's in the board package could be, have the actual dates that are going to be in that top right corner. Well, it could be in a draft across the page or something, but it shouldn't still be showing the samples because, I mean, it's, in effect, we're agreeing to the revision date when we have no idea what it's going to be because it's not going to be put in until after the fact. So like, I'm just saying is that that one should be as close as we can to what was going to be posted.
Through Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. On your first point, manager Gortmaker, she has all those dates on record, but perhaps we need to be a bit more overt for public consumption. So we can do that, we can put those on there, we do have them. And on your second point, it's our understanding that we can't do that until it is, there's a board motion on that and it's approved, but, so.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you, through your chair. I apologize because this is just occurring to me now as I read it. One of, Milton being a high-growth area, we certainly have schools open on a fairly frequent basis. So for the school council procedure, I see a line that says for new schools, the formation of the school council shall be no sooner than September 1st of the year in which the school opens. So just sort of, as I was rereading this now, it occurs to me that it doesn't say academic year. So some of our schools will open in the later half of a year, say in March, April. And then my other concern, I know that, one of the concerns of the communities who have gone through this recently is that when a new school opens, it's very difficult to get some of the usual sort of fundraising and community-building efforts started when a new council doesn't start until the September 1st. And I wonder just if there's any discussion or consideration given to, often, a new school will break off from a part of an old school. And is there some flexibility there, I guess is what I'm asking.
Through your chair, Amos, I will defer to Superintendent Solmini.
The dates in the legislation for regular school councils that make up the organization are stated. And so that is what has been used for this guideline. I'm wondering if we could take a look at a process for having an existing school council of one or more schools have some less formal kinds of opportunities that that.
Through your chair, Amos, added to Superintendent Solmini's points, when Erie Ridge was opened and built, there was a quasi-school council about six months before the school opened. So there is an ability to do it. I guess we try to figure out how to provide that process for parents in guidelines, so.
And I believe sometimes if a school doesn't open until April, it may be in a holding school somewhere else. So it's actually formed, it's just not at the location of the school, right? I mean, so there's different pieces. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. On the school council issue, one of the points in it, the board will facilitate communication among the school councils within the jurisdiction. And I was curious as to how and why it wasn't either fleshed out or given an example, et cetera. If we do it already now, why we didn't flush that out a little bit more?
Superintendent Solmini?
We have guidelines around school councils and in those procedures, it's noted. We didn't put it in to hear. We could take a look at adding some of those details if you wish.
Just, I've had a lot of experience with school councils, and they don't talk to each other. So if, I mean, I know that the trustees are facilitating that, but if there is a system in place already, perhaps we could, I mean, you say that there's other procedures. This is the administrative procedure, so, and it doesn't have, if you're talking about the handbooks and the supplements, it's not in there. So I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to.
I was referring to the handbooks and the supplement. So you're looking specifically for a process for the Board of Trustees to be involved?
No, I'm saying if the board says it will facilitate communication, I don't know whether that means you can use our, you know, by the way, we have email addresses for you, or it means we have a super council, or it means we're going to suggest you talk to each other. I'm not exactly sure what that means on those, on that basis.
Okay, we can take that back and look to put some of those details into the procedure.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the director on this? Seeing none? Okay, we are now up to committee reports. Are there any committee reports tonight? Trustee Collard.
Yes, at our last meeting of Policy Byline Governance, it was decided we would pilot a new format for our committees, using a committee of the whole structure. And we will be starting that in February.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you. Just to let you know that, as you know, I'm your representative on Central West Executive for the Ontario Public School Board Association. And I was fortunate enough to be asked to go with three other trustees to see the Ministry of Education Curriculum and Policy people on Monday. And a great deal of work is being done moving forward in creating the Steering Committee on Mandatory Indigenous Curriculum in our schools as well as Indigenous language classes. So it was a very, very positive meeting. We all left feeling very optimistic about moving forward. But I just want to let you know that as your rep on that committee, that's what I had done. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. It's exciting. Is there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none? We're now up to the director's report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Only two quick items, well, two items tonight. The first one is tomorrow at Code, Superintendent Veerman, Superintendent Bog, and myself will hear the Minister of Education Liz Handel's address as around some of the collective bargaining issues and so on that have been brought forward and so on. The other one is around. The other one is around our, the location of our self-contained and the placement for our students who have been placed in those. Currently, the process has been under the purview of the Superintendent of Student Services. And the Superintendent of Student Services works with his department to find the most appropriate and best places to place those self-contained and centers, et cetera, such as gifted and so on. We believe that we need to take a relook at that process and develop an admin procedure so that it's a formalized process, so that it can be transparent for the public and for trustees as well. And so, therefore, we'll undertake that work to take a look at what our current practice is, how we're doing our current practice and then proceed with a procedure, an admin procedure, so that we can be a little more transparent. And the Superintendent of Student Services will consult with the appropriate bodies and the appropriate organizations, internal stakeholders, C I A, et cetera. So, any questions? Unfortunately, Superintendent Zahnfeld's not here this evening as he's tied up. So, he, you know, he can refer questions to me, but, and I may be able to refer them to him if I don't know the answer.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you very much, Director Miller. I know that the families of students in special education placements will be very appreciative of this work.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions tonight for the director? Seeing none, we are now up to communications from the chair. I have a couple. The first is a reminder that the Halton Student Transportation Systems Annual General Meeting is next Tuesday at eleven-thirty and it's here in this boardroom. The next item is, as you know, I sent out a doodle doc to try and pick the first date for our multi-year plan. At this moment, it looks like the best date is Monday, February first, from seven to ten P M. And I know that is a problem for a couple, so I'm hoping that some may have some flexibility around that date. I'm seeing a nod or two. Okay, so anyways, that's the date at this time. The other dates, I'm waiting for the facilitator to get back to me so we can send out the doodle doc on the next processes, so we can pick those future dates in the process. So, for those who can't be involved, we will make sure that you're, you are a part of the consultation. I had a chance to talk to trustee Schneider, but not so high because we know you're in exams. So, we will make sure that we sit down with you and go through the process, so we can get your feedback as well. I had the honor of receiving an invitation from the Ministry of Finance to make a two-to-three minute presentation to them on behalf of the Halton District School Board, which will be next week in Hamilton. It's a part of our pre-budget consultation, so I will be putting together something and representing the board there. And last, but definitely not least, this is the last board meeting for one of our superintendents. Superintendent Dyson is going to be retiring as of the end of this month and we are greatly going to miss her. I remember interviewing Trish when she first came to the board before she started. And I know she has made a huge impact on not just the students of Halton, but the students of the province from all the hard work that she has done in numeracy and literacy and so many other areas I can't even begin to cover. But I know that we will miss you, miss you, Tricia. And so, we would like to wish you all the best for your retirement and we hope that maybe you're available if we ever need you to come back on contract. But we wish you all the best and congratulations. Okay, so we are now up to trustees' comments and questions. Are there any trustee comments and questions tonight? Seeing none. Oh, there's also, okay, there's two. You guys popped up. Trustee Gray.
Thank you Chair Amos. I would just like to have the trustees aware of the work of Principal Mary Jane Farish, who was able to secure Educators' Guides to Islamic Religious Practices. We talked about this not too long ago and I held up a pamphlet and it was under review and being rewritten by the National Council of Canadian Muslims. She's been able to secure these and they will be going out into our schools within the next short while. In this guide, it identifies some issues that some Muslim parents and students have with respect to specific curriculum and subject areas such as music, dance, art, drama, physical education, sex education, school outings, social events and other topics such as physical contact and bullying. It's a really good read and I look forward to all of the trustees receiving their copy as well as all of the schools having this as a guide to help them in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Director Miller would like to jump in.
Thank you Chair Amos. It's actually, it's not about the guide, but it's about Principal Mary Jane Farish, who has been invited as esteemed member and it's a great statement about the Halton District School Board, in particular, her work and the work of previous superintendent of that area, Yao Obang, and current superintendent, Rob Etoff. Principal Mary Jane Farish has been invited to Winnipeg, all expenses paid, to advise, consult, review the Museum of Human Rights and Civilization. So, she will be going there. So, I'm not sure, I don't know, Superintendent Etoff, do you have anything to add to that?
Wow, what an honor and privilege. That's awesome. Trustee Gerbance.
I, along with a number of other trustees, attended the first robotics competition kickoff on January the ninth and it was fabulous. The room was just buzzing. Over five hundred students from, I would say, all the secondary schools basically were there. I think we're all represented. And they are all so excited to be participating in this year's competition, which is called Stronghold. And you can actually see the sort of thing that they're going to be doing or building robots to be able to accomplish at firstinspire.org. So, I encourage you to go check that out because I'm just dying to see how they're going to accomplish this, how these robots are going to do all the things that they have to do to complete the competition.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, just a note about a few upcoming events. Firstly, tomorrow night, there's a showing of the movie We Were Children. And that is, it highlights the profound impact of residential schools and that will be shown between four and seven P M. at Corpus Christi in room three nineteen. And that is for an eighteen-plus audience, but all members of the community are invited to come out to that. January twenty-seventh is Family Literacy Day. And February twenty-third, or February third is Winter Walk Day. So, I look forward to bundling up and walking with my children to school. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Patton.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that John Tuck Choir performed at the Ontario Legislature. The primary and junior choirs sang on the steps of the Legislative Assembly in Toronto. And MP Eleanor McMahon was delighted to attend the event. Both choirs sang incredibly well and were thrilled to be part of this opportunity.
That's great. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you. Just to follow up on trustee L Harrison's, that the movie has been shown a few times now and I was, I don't want to say fortunate enough, but honored to be able to attend the one that was held in Milton. And if anybody has not yet seen it and is able to go tomorrow, I would strongly, strongly encourage you. It is a very powerful, very moving movie and I would highly recommend it. That, and just a reminder that next week, we do have the Public Education Symposium and I'm hoping to see a number of you. Email did go out because a large number of people had said they were attending the Aboriginal Council. So, you've been asked to confirm your attendance at that if you are going because it looks like there's so much interest in the Aboriginal Council. It looks like we may be needing a bigger room, which I think is really fantastic.
That's great. Thank you. Is there any other comments, trustee questions or comments tonight? Seeing none? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee L Harrison, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? Trustee Reynolds? There we go. Maybe? Oh, I bet you Sophie didn't sign it. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much and good night.